All right, GBA, we are live, we are recording, phone lines are opened, go for it.
Thank you, Matt, welcome everybody to the Town of East Hampton zoning Board of Appeals meeting for October 21st, 2025. We have some scheduled public hearings this evening, I'll read the first one into the record. First applicant is Alexander Childs McDonald at 123 Harbor Boulevard Springs, Suffolk County map number 300-95-6-12.2. The size and location is 14,000 square feet at 123 Harbor Boulevard, Montauk View, lot 1 through 6 filed July 23rd, 1911, as a map number 16 in Springs. The description is to allow a first story addition to remain 13.8 feet and slate pavers to remain 14.7 feet from the rear lot line where 15 feet is required. The variances of 1.2 feet and .3 feet pursuant to 2551110 of East Hampton town code is required to allow the addition to remain 13.8 feet and slate pavers to remain 14.7 feet from the rear yard lot line where 15 foot is required, any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B residence, zone X flood zone and the secret class is type 2. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
I have not received this yet, I know this is one where we had some issues with the applicant, so with the posting, I think he's here though, so that's a ticket.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, you gotta take care of it.
There's no affidavit on this one, but it wasn't posted, yeah?
So, and I'll let the applicant discuss it, and Morgan, Morgan was working with him too, but I believe there was, I have an affidavit and the posting seems to be done correctly, but the mailings went out a little late because of a snafu with the assessor's office, he wasn't able to get the addresses on time, but I'll let him discuss that, but so we were off by, according to the affidavit, and they were mailed out on the 14th when they should have been mailed out on the 11th. So they missed it by a few days.
So your suggestion would be to do what?
I think because of the facts that I was conveyed, that he had gone to the assessor's office and the assessor said he had to foil to get the addresses, which is not, I don't know why they did that, so he didn't have the addresses.
So do you think we should...
We could have the public hearing and then do a, keep it open for proper notice till the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you said there's an affidavit posted, was it posted?
It was posted on the property lines, but the mailings went out a few days late.
He did the mailings out.
So when would we, when would we leave it open till, because it's already been posted, there was no posting there today.
Right, and there was no posting.
So what if we left it open till the 18th?
I mean, I just have the affidavit, I don't know if it was posted at the...
If we left it open till November 18th, would that be appropriate?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready. So I went there today, and this is, I'm standing on Harbor Boulevard, and I'm facing the residence, and I'm walking down the driveway, which is a gravel driveway. Next, please, Morgan. Oh, this is just another visual, a little bit closer, shows the chimney, and, next, please. Now I'm actually on the side where the addition is, and underneath this deck is where the pavers are in the gravel under the deck. Next, please. A kind of a better picture of where you could see the pavers. Next, please. This is the northwest side of the property. Next, please. This is the, the steps leading up to the entrance, and there's just stones leading up to the steps, it just continues the gravel driveway as you walk in. Next, please. This is actually on the southeast side of the property, a little bit past the addition, this actually really slopes dramatically to the rear of this property, and what you're looking at is a concrete wall, and I'm literally standing on top of it looking down. Next, please. This is a, just took a photo of the outdoor shower. Next, please. This is the rear of the property, just to give you an idea of what the whole house looks like. Next, please. This is fencing that appears to be, I almost thought it was encompassing the entire property, but in the front of the property, when you're standing on Harbor Boulevard, there is no fencing, so. Next, please. I think that might be it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You have the applicant agent, come on up. Announce who you are and your address.
I'm Alexander Childs McDonald, address is 123 Harbor Boulevard, East Hampton, New York.
Are you an attorney? Are you an attorney?
I'm not.
Okay, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, you can present your...
So my, the addition that was put onto my house was built too close to the property line. I only learned this during the initial inspection, which was March 2024, after everything had been built, and the inspector, Ryan Benitez, had come to my home to check the project and make sure everything was up to snuff and good to get approved. And I'll just comment on the pavers, by the way, they've already been moved, that shouldn't be an issue, I moved them back.
Oh, moved, so that would show up on a new survey?
I think it does show up on the new survey, if my surveyor, Tim Taylor, I was back and forth for sure with him.
And the survey, just so we're clear, is last revised February 6, 2025, just for the record.
That sounds about right, yeah.
With the updated papers, I have it right here.
But it still, it still shows the pavers slightly.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe he didn't, I, yes, this was a thing that I had with the surveyor, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know which one you're looking at, and I'd have to look at my records to see which one I have, but I remember speaking to the surveyor specifically about this to make sure he made the adjustment on the plans that were submitted to you.
Could we zoom in on the date of this survey here, the one we're looking at? This is the latest one, does that say February?
Yeah.
This is the latest one we're looking at.
Yeah, that's what I...
That says updated papers. And if you could point to where we're talking about, Morgan? There, there you go.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, can I clarify, so you're saying that versus what's reflected on this survey, you're saying that the pavers have been moved further away?
So originally, the pavers were in line with the edge of the house, and they were moved back so that it matched the 15, it might be more than 15 feet, but it respected the 15 feet, so it's up to code.
Okay.
Okay, being that, so just, Tim Taylor, he has surveyed it?
He has surveyed it, he's the one who did the survey.
All right, being that the record might stay open, we might request a copy of that be sent in.
A copy of the most recent one that he did? Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you had it.
What, as far as the addition, though, what was, was, what did the building permit show, the drawing showed, we have the architect here, want to come on up and introduce yourself?
I'm Jonathan Foster, I'm an architect, I've been in East Hampton for a very long time, and...
Hold on, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Second.
So I have a couple of things to give you guys. The floor plan.
Thank you.
Pass them down a little bit here, maybe?
Sure.
I think there are six copies of everything, and I'm also giving you a letter I wrote to the building department.
Thank you, Jonathan.
See this, yeah, this is, no.
So we started, well, oh, go ahead, go ahead. At the very, from the very beginning, the property line was sort of mysterious, and the fence there was a split rail fence, it rotting, it's all over the place and so forth, and I try, and there's this concrete wall, which you described, which is, you know, fathered in, grandfathered in now, but I thought, well, this, you know, what is actually going on here? I went in and spent some time with Dawn Green at the building department to find out, she said, well, you got to get rid of all the furniture, all the decking, all the whatever stuff is in that underground area, and, and so forth, but she couldn't really deal with the dimension off the property line, and I wanted to get the surveyor to give me a spot, you know, and he kept saying, it's just the fence line, but the fence line, I was able to measure from the fence widely differing, you know, dimensions from, from one spot to another, it's just very difficult. So having said that, I thought I had worked out a way to make sure I was very easily within our rights. The, then we put it out to bid and picked a builder, Phil Miller, who lives in East Hampton too, and he, I went over with the whole plans with him, everything, all the details, where everything went and so forth, and I said, can you do this, you want to do this? Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do anything you want. So day one, I get there, I was out of town when they poured the foundation, day one, I got there and, and the front two feet of the building were cut off, I said, how are you, how are you gonna, candidly with that, you've already done the decking, you can't just, you know, put it on posts here, and I says, you think I'm gonna do that, you're crazy. So he cut off two feet off the front of the house. So then he didn't build the rest of the house exactly to the plans either, and so squishing space in to less than, you know, taking two feet out at the end, very end, I think that what he did was, when he built that closet, I had a little, little bay window there, that's in there that is like, you know, well, maybe you could sit in it, you know, but it wasn't, didn't go to the ground, didn't go to the roof, it's just there like a little window, and he didn't do that. So what he did was, he pushed the concrete, the foundation out further than planned. You can see that the red line at the bottom is the two feet cutoff, and that little box at the, at the other end, at the property line end, is, is missing because he used that space for building. And I didn't know that, I mean, after this, going through this project with him, if you read the letter that I wrote to the building department, that's some of the things that, that he did, he just did not want to follow the plans whatsoever, he wanted to do everything his own way, and it was an incredible problem. And I, there's nothing, I mean, there's very little I could have done to get him to do it right, you know.
When did you know that there was a problem in terms of being too close to the property line, and early on with him, was this come later on?
Well, no, I didn't, I didn't know until, until I was told, you know.
When you went for a CO?
What?
When you went for...
When they went for the...
I originally found out from Ryan Benitez, who was the person assigned to my property, when he was in the house, when he had come to the house to get to inspect the job.
Was that your framing inspection?
And that's when I found out, so I think, I think that was March 2024.
And, you know, with all of this other chaos, kind of that kind of disappeared from my mind as a, as an issue, because I thought it was under control, but contractor wasn't really in control, so.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, Jonathan, so what you handed us, and you're talking about this red line here, but I'm trying to orient this relative to the little part on the survey, that same question.
The big red line is right here, so that comes along here.
That's what I thought.
Those two feet are gone, and then there's a little box that comes off the back end. This wall should really be here, and that box goes out to that spot, see?
I'm sorry, I don't see a box, I see an AC unit, but I don't see... AC, it says.
Bay window?
No, look at this right here.
No, I'm sorry, I'm trying to reconcile with the survey, sorry.
The survey, right?
Yeah.
So that doesn't show, that shows what's there.
Right.
This is what is planned to do.
This was the plan, okay.
You're showing that he deviated from.
Yeah, yeah. So what we're saying is that that bay window bump out was planned and approved to meet the 15-foot setback, is that what you're saying?
But it's a bay window, it doesn't, it's no foundation.
Microphone, please.
The, the dimensions go to the foundation of the building, if there's a bay window above it, it's different.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have no more, no.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Keep this open for proper posting until the...
I only hear you for the proper posting.
So you need to get, they said that the sign, right, did he say the sign wasn't there, the poster wasn't there?
I put two up.
There were no, I'm sorry, you know, I looked a lot of times with a storm, something blows down, I did look around, it must have blown away.
Yeah, so we'll have to get, Morgan may have to get new posters, and then get new posters, put them up, and we'll come back, and the mailings went out, so we don't have to do the mailings, but the poster will go up, and then you don't have to come back, you can, on the 18th, you should probably, if you can, come back, and that way, if a neighbor wanted to discuss this, they could, I, I have a feeling that they probably won't, but you never know, so we'll just leave it open for proper notice.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't leave yet, because we're not done, Morgan has to come up and do her thing. Hi, Morgan.
Good evening, Board, Morgan Slater for the planning department.
Morgan, do you swear affirm to tell truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I don't really have a ton to add to this, it's a pretty straightforward area variance application. The, oh, so the addition was constructed under building permit issued in 2023, it was ultimately constructed too close to the property line, I will say, the building permit plans that I looked at were a little hard to follow, so I'm interested to see what was submitted tonight, but I don't think it's really going to change any recommendations from our department. Both variance requests, I think, can be considered as the minimus. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have about the property or its history, though.
Any questions, board members?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you, Morgan. Is there anybody in the public like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
Standby, please.
And this is Matt Chapman calling from LTV, making sure that lines are open and clear, which they are, and you have zero additional callers, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Hey, can we have any motion? We're going to keep the hearing open until...
Okay, November 18th.
Okay.
Okay, in the matter of Alexander Childs McDonald, 123 Harbor Boulevard Springs, Suffolk County tax map number 300-95-6-12.2, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, but leave the record open for, until November 18th, and we're also going to get a copy of a more recent survey. Okay.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. All right, next hearing is Margaret and Richard Hirsch at 16 Dune Lane Amagansett, Suffolk County map number 300-176-4-8. The size and location is 12,375 square feet at 16 Dune Lane Hampton Dunes, lot 52, filed August 17th, 1966, is map number 4694 in Amagansett. The description is to allow a 962 square foot deck, 290 square foot woodwalk, an outdoor shower to remain within minimum wetland setbacks. Relief sought is three variances of 75.5 feet, 43 feet, and 30.8 feet pursuant to 255430 of the East Hampton town code are needed to allow the deck to remain 22 feet, outdoor shower to remain 57 feet, and woodwalk to remain 69.2 feet from the wetland where 100-foot setback is required, and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B residence, X flood zone, .2% annual chance flood hazard, AE10, secret class is type 2. This is the one we were concerned about, the posting, right?
Well, the posting and the NRSP, that it's also an NRSP.
Yeah, we just want to breathe, it's not posted as an NRSP, but it does fall within NRSP jurisdiction, so that in our, in our, in our consideration of this application, it'll fall under any other relief necessary. So we're still going to have to address the NRSP.
Yeah, and I reviewed the affidavit of notice and posting, and everything's good to go on this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everybody. So I went to visit the property, and full disclosure, I live around this neighborhood, so I walk by the property often, and I had seen that it had been properly posted for quite a while. This is on Monday, we had a big blowing storm overnight, and when I came to the property, the card that was posted on the board was in the puddle, so I picked it up, I didn't want to leave it in the puddle, I think I had asked the office to reach out to the agent if she wanted to go and repost it, but I do believe it had been fair, you know, it had been fully posted properly until it hit the puddle. Okay, so this is the front of the property, next slide. Like, this is just a view, I'm looking north on Dune towards Central Avenue, just to get a little sense of the street and the neighborhood, next slide. Okay, I think we're a little out of order here, but anyway, this is, these are the steps coming off the driveway, the steps are part of the walkway that is, that are one of the elements, this is on the north side of the house, that, its front door is on the north side of the house, that will need variance, next slide. As you go up those steps, it's a little hard to see because of all the stuff that had been blown around, but that is the brick patio area on the front of the house that is noticed to be removed. Next slide. I'm just going further back on that walkway, the whole thing, I believe, needs the relief and the variance, I'm heading towards the back of the, or the rear of the property, I'll be swinging around in a moment, next slide. I just wanted to show along the, that walkway, so this property basically is on top of a dune, obviously this house was built before there were, was natural resources standards, and I just did want to note that a lot of, I mean, the dune structure is there, but much of the dune land has been, I think over time, I'll use the word degraded, it's been mulched, it's irrigated, there are a lot of invasives or ornamentals, so I just wanted to show that it's true around the rear of the house as well. Next slide. All right, so I'm just about to head around the corner rear of the house, that is the shower that is noticed for relief, next slide. Okay, this is the rear, so the rear facade of the house is to my right, you can see the door of the shower basically right there, this is the portion of the deck that's the closest to the house, and it's, it's not really a raised deck, it's, I think it's pretty much right on the, mostly on the ground. Next slide. I'm just turning my back to the rest of the decking, and this is the, just the rear of the house, the decking goes right up to the house, next slide. Okay, so now my back is to the rear facade of the house, and that's the decking that extends really out towards the wetland's edge, I'm sorry, the edge of it extends out, I think I have, next slide, you can sort of see how it's elevated, no, it's, we're out here, but the edge of that rear, oh yeah, sorry, that is the edge, you can see at the bottom of the slide of the northern part of the deck, it's not, it doesn't quite come out well in the photo, but the property drops off pretty steeply right after, you know, the edge of that deck, and then that's, the wetlands are back in there, next slide. I took another view, the colorful stuff in the distance is really in that wetland, as the TAM says, it's fairly extensive wetland, just for reference for the board, there's a house in the distance that's 170 Marine, which had been before the board, and there was a lot of discussion on that application about protecting that wetland, so you can kind of see, as the TAM says, many houses, you know, impact this wetlands, next slide. This is the south side of the house, this is the decking and the shed that is noted to be removed as part of this application. Next slide, I don't know, I had some street views, or, oh yeah, these, sorry, these were out, so this was just the front of the house, this is the southern portion of the driveway on Dune, you can see the house presents very setback and, you know, not very prominent because of all the vegetation in front of it, and then I think I had one more, that's just the rest of the driveway. Yeah, that was the other side of the driveway where the posting was, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara? Andy, come on up.
Good evening, Chairman Delene, members of the board, Richard A. Hammer from Biano and Hammer, I'm here tonight representing Margaret and Richard Hirsch to this application at 16 Dune Lane Amagansett, Tara is also here with me. I did want to address the posting, yes, my office, Tara, reposted it, did we even get a call? She stays up at night and wonders to when the wind's blowing, and she had reposted that about 1:00, 2:00 in the afternoon after the rain had stopped, because that's just a typical thing to do. I think your photos captured it well, fairly modest house in the dunes area, long predates NRSP regulations, house was built in 1966 or thereabouts. We submitted affidavits regarding the deck in question, providing that it predates town wetland regulations, I think it pretty, the affidavits are from members of the family that prominently remember this deck being built for 1983 or 1984 birthday party of the owner, it was a central feature in his 55th birthday celebration, they all seem to remember. I included a letter we found from the original owner, who was Bud Hirsch, who has since passed away, then he had hired a builder in 1983 to extend the deck to include a spa, the spa is no longer there, but it was at the time provided for, and I actually recognized the builder's name on the house, Ted Bory, I think I've heard that name before in the past throughout this area. When it was initially built, it had a deck that you can see on the survey, but it was extended about 15 years later. In my experience, decks at grade level would typically not require a building permit, depending how they were built at the time, basically, and I've seen that with pool decking, et cetera, over the years.
Yeah, but in 83, they were requiring hundreds.
Typically, yes, but at grade, not always, I've seen it both ways, basically, I can't explain what was there, I wasn't there in 1983, but it did look like he hired a builder, and his letter even says...
Did Christopher O back then, or something, or Bill Gale, one of them?
Yeah, I don't know who the building inspector was in 83, might have been Fred Sellers.
I think, I just popped in my head, might have been Fred Sellers.
So in any event, it was in fact constructed and has remained in place since that deck, and it was only recently something that we recognized not having a rush of board to legalize it. There is a "for rent" sign, basically the kids have been renting the house, they, or they tried to over the summer, that's when this first came up, when we applied for a rental permit, I said, oh, let me see your CO, I said, this thing's from 1966, what the heck's going on? So in any event, I said, we should try to get this legalized. There's a fair amount of topography in the rear of the lot that you can see on the survey, it doesn't show up so well in the pictures, you know, what's strange is in 1966, or even before that, in 1977, when the DEC had any regulations, they could have just regraded all that and, you know, put up retaining walls, they didn't, basically. I think they've been fairly good stewards of the property since it was improved with the house, they enjoyed the dune land and wetland features, it's hard to tell the areas that are now were dune land or not, you know, those could probably were legally landscaped in 1966 and just continue to the present, but if you look at the survey, it's a pretty tight clearing restriction, regulation around the property, we're well under lot coverage, clearing all the other regulations under the code. We're well under lot coverage, clearing, all the other regulations under the code. I think the deck that was installed here is certainly preferable to walk through dunes or installing a lawn, which they probably could have done back in the day as well, clearly not today. I think it does, I think it's entirely consistent with the NRSP regulations, we're, as I mentioned, we're well within all the coverage limitations. That wetland in the rear is shared with another property, I think it's right on the property line, and there is a house across the way that shares it with us. The line of clearing is respected pretty much right up to the deck, that led some historical credibility to this deck being a positive factor on the property, it's not really a negative, because once you step, and nobody steps off of that and respects the clearing. The other thing that we're proposing that probably date back to some time period in the past, you know, there were quite a few things that the family just said, "We'll get rid of them." I noticed that front patio, okay, we'll get rid of that, we'll get rid of the shed, I don't know where it originated, but the family wasn't all that concerned about them, and said they would certainly remove it, the existing outdoor shower, I, you know, Morgan mentions in her TAM, that it's, you know, could be in a more conforming location, it's actually under a second story deck, you know, it seems like a logical place to have the deck, it doesn't require any clearing, any improvement. Yes, you could relocate it, but you'd be putting it on currently unimproved surfaces that would require more disturbance, so I think it's not a bad location where it's currently sits right now. It's been there for a long time, and as I said, just the least disturbance seems to be preferable. I'd say the site is basically encapsulated by the uncleared areas, basically the walkway that we're seeking to legalize and all that, basically prevent encroachment onto the unimproved areas, and I think they've been pretty attentive to protecting the vegetation outside of that, their improved areas. I don't believe it's a huge ask, we've established this, been here and it long predates town regulations, and if you need those affidavits, I can have them resubmitted, but they are part of our original application. It's unfortunate, the house, it's difficult to really see all of this on the aerial photos, but you can see evidence on the photos that Morgan attached that show what appears to be decades, it's just, it wasn't surveyed, it was, you know, it's not a clear shot that shows it, but, you know, everything seems to point to this has been there since 1983, and in my experience, it's just not entirely clear that in 1983, they would have asked for a building permit for this or not, they probably should have, but I've seen lots of cases where they haven't. I think the benefit that the applicant seeks here, it's a good benefit to the property, and it sort of defines and confines the residential use on the property to improve surfaces, and also provides a measure of protection to the surrounding vegetation. As member Mirring mentioned, there is some of this ornamental vegetation, I, you know, I think the board could say, "Hey, why don't you," you know, or be happy to look at getting rid of that, I don't know, it doesn't look like it's maintained to the nth degree or whatever, and maybe the family would be willing to let that revert to dune vegetation or introduce some dune vegetation, but that was kind of consistent with the entirety of the neighborhood when this is built, and kind of how the family enjoyed it up until today.
I just to note that, you know, on those aerials that we were referring to, in the 19, even in the 1988 aerial, what is, what is pretty clear is the dune land characteristic of the neighborhood, it's very, very clear. So, I mean, we're losing that over time.
Yep.
Can we just make it clear that you're saying that the entire deck we're looking at here was constructed by 1983?
That is, I am not saying that, but that's, the affidavits say that that was part of the spa that was constructed in 1983 or 1984. That's what the family provided.
Only because, you know, we're asking for a natural resource special permit, and it's just for the record. You know, how did the walkway and decking keep the environment safe? Like, if approved, what would be the justification?
You're not stepping, you know, you're not, what would be the alternative? I guess a pathway, dirt, you know, at grade, that, those tend to have runoff issues, everything associated with them, and you're encouraging trampling of vegetation, all that stuff. I also tend to think that walkways over dunes are a good idea, because they, you know, require and encourage a single pathway, and it's not going to be slopping off. You know, this property is not landscaped as I would think of it, where they have lawn mowing and all that other stuff going on, it's kind of a very, you know, natural landscaping on the property in general, but I think having these walkways is a way to protect that. And if you coupled it with a requirement that we revisit some of that revegetation, I'm sure, I'm sure they could come in with that, and probably it would be no problem for the family.
Can I ask the question? So I, it'll have in front of me, but I read the affidases about Mr. Hirsch's birthday party and the recollection of the deck, but I thought they said a deck and a jacuzzi? So what happened to the?
Jacuzzi was long lost at the end of the day, I mean, it was probably built into it. For a long time, the town didn't require any permits for jacuzzis.
But I guess, so was the deck rebuilt after that, when the jacuzzi was removed? Do you know, or the deck is really-
The jacuzzi was framed in, and then it was just decked over at the end of the day. And if you go there today, that decking that's there, I think it's composite decking, so it's clearly, the board to equip, to replace, but you can do that without a permit in the town.
And on the shower, since it comes up, so, does it have a drywell at this point?
I think it's on clean sand.
Oh.
You know, I mean, the question whether or not, I don't even know if you could get a drywell in, it's a pretty low grade, but, you know, if the board asked them to do it, I'm sure they could figure out how to install one, it would just be a shallow groundwater, and it's over clean sand, pretty much this whole area is pretty clean sand.
And when do you think the shower was built at the same time? What, I can't remember.
Look, I don't know specifically, but it certainly looks to be several decades old when you look at the photos and visit the site.
My last question, I don't know if my other board members have questions, or I don't want to hog.
It's more the enclosure, by the way, on the shower. The enclosure is probably the problem on the outdoor shower, you could probably have it sitting on the wall, that would be fine, but it's the enclosure that looks to be several years, many years old.
You were saying that maybe there could be some discussion about maybe naturalizing some of the area that has the invasives or the ornamentals, but, and I don't know if it would make a difference, but since the edge of the deck is so close to the wetland, and there's topography there, is there something that you'd be willing to do that might at least protect that last 20 feet of the rear of the property?
Well, it'd be tough to say a scenic easement, because scenic easements require structures, you know, but we could have a scenic easement that would allow a structure within 10 feet, you know, I think that would be the most permanent protection, or a vegetated buffer requirement, a covenant, basically, that would be filed, that would say that beyond the edge of that, the existing deck or the approved deck, there won't be any clearing, grading, or disturbance of soil, or something to that effect. It'd essentially be a scenic easement that's not a scenic easement, either one, I think, would be, I'd be amenable to.
And when you say you're willing to revisit, visit the revegetation, are you amenable to the structures that are removed, being, those areas being revegetated?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think a good condition to consider would be upon, you know, that prior to the issuance of building permit, they'll submit a revegetation plan, and in that revegetation plan, address some of the other issues on the, you know, but clearly those areas, it would be re-done with beach grass and, you know, mothalober, vagalata, or whatever it is, you know, three-inch combs on 16-inch centers, and we would kind of spread that around, basically, and show that to the board for approval.
It would be nice to get rid of a lot of that mulch and the irrigation that really degrades the sandy character, it's, yeah.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm good. Sandy.
Morgan?
I did want to say, I wanted to see Bud's cake, 55 candles.
Yeah, I was just reading that.
The party.
Burning brightly. Hi, Morgan.
Hi, Morgan Slater again for the planning department. This property is on the east side of Dune Lane, is part of 1966 Hampton Dune subdivision, which was created before the town's natural resources special permit regulations, and because they were adopted in 1984. This property is pre-existing, non-conforming to minimum wetland setbacks, and has an undersized lot area for B Residence zoning, both of which are characteristic of this neighborhood. The freshwater wetland is at the rear of the property and consists of a groundwater maintained shrub swamp and marsh. The wetlands contain diverse wetland plant species indicative of high soil saturation levels. The habitat of the wetland provides benefits to wetland-dependent wildlife and provides important floodwater retention benefits for the Beach Hampton area, which is flood-prone due to its low elevation and development density. The variance request can be considered as substantial, and since there are numerous lots in the vicinity of this wetland that are similarly constrained, the board should determine whether this request is unique enough to warrant approval. The planning department has reviewed historical town records and was unable to find any definitive evidence that the deck footprint predates wetland setback regulations. It does appear the deck has been maintained and reconstructed in recent years. The shower is also requesting a significant variance, and there does appear to be more conforming areas on the property for an outdoor shower. It's worth noting that the entirety of the residence is within 100 feet of the wetland, so it would be difficult for any structure to, on this lot, to meet the required setbacks, however, more conforming locations are feasible. I did have the 1988 aerial up just before, and you can see that there was significant dune land habitat present on the parcel. There has, this parcel has not come before the town for much of anything, really. I sent out building history, it'll be available in the file also, so it's kind of flown under the radar, really, until now, and I can answer any questions the board may have about the lot or its history.
Any questions, board members?
Well, I have a question about the variance for the woodwalk. I didn't see where, where is that from?
The actual dimension?
Yeah.
I think I took it from the side of this line here, where it seems like it turns more of just a deck, just to, just the straight walkway, so that's where that dimension's coming from.
To that wetland, to that same wetland.
Yeah, so this is what the walkway is measured to. It's the area.
Okay.
And the suggestion that there's a better place for the outdoor shower, making that suggestion?
Yeah, I mean, even on the south side of the residence, I think it provides sufficient, you know, privacy for something like an outdoor shower while having an increased setback. I think it would probably increase that back by 15 to 20 feet, potentially.
So that's in the area where they're proposing to remove the walkway and the shed beyond, right? On the south side?
Yes, it appears so.
Okay.
And then what I raised about some sort of easement on the topography in the back, some sort of protection, would that-
It would be a small easement, I'm not sure it would be-
It protects the topographies.
It does protect the topography, any manipulation of that area does still require, would be in front of the board, because that would require a variance, just something to keep in mind.
Any other questions?
No.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Is there anybody in the public would like to address this application? Anybody online, Matt?
Yes, you do, stand by, please. And unmuted, last four digits, 0381, you are live.
Are you here for this call? Are you here for this application? One more time, caller, are you here for this application? All right, we're going to move on.
Okay, you have your additional callers, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Can we have a motion?
Uh, okay, did, did you want to, did the applicant want to follow up with the younger ones? Okay.
I don't think so.
So we, so how, I'm sorry, are we, the issue of revegetation or anything, are we leaving that for some sort of revegetation proposal?
We can have Andy come up and address that, because, how we want to address that, Andy?
Well, I do, I do want to address what Morgan said, "Oh, we could move the outdoor shower." I would prefer to just have that be part of the revegetation on the property, rather than creating a new outdoor shower, enclosure area, or some, you know, I think where it's situated right now is, requires nothing, and I think we can do more revegetation rather than trying to place a new structure there. My suggestion would be, if the board were to approve this, you can require revegetation prior to the issuance of a building permit. It will include all the areas where everything's being removed, and I will make sure it also includes some of the areas that have regular landscape, or, you know, the mulch or whatever, and have that restored to a similar plant type.
We, we, prior to a building permit.
All right, so I will make a motion. In the matter of Margaret and Richard Hirsch, 16 Dune Lane, Amagansett, tax map number 300-176-04-08, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and close the record.
Second.
Concur.
I concur.
Concur. Thank you. Next, we have Jordan Brinken, Inez Saleh, at 49 Gull Road, Montauk, subtax map number 300-10-6S5. The size and location is 75,000 square feet, 49 Gull Road, Colodin Shores, Lot 60, map number 3433, filed October 16th in 1961 in Montauk. The description is to allow patio to remain 8.8 feet and 9.3 feet from side, southern and rear eastern lot lines where 15 feet is required. Two variances of 6.2 feet and 5.7 feet pursuant to 255-1110 of the East Hampton Town Code is required to allow the existing patio to remain 8.8 feet and 9.3 feet from the side yard and rear lot lines where 15 feet is required and any other relief necessary. Zoning district is B Residence X Flood Zone, and the secret class is type 2. Counsel, I'm going to ask if we have proper affidavit of service and posting, I think there was an issue here?
Yeah, I don't have an affidavit, and I think there were some issues with the-
You don't have the affidavit?
I don't have an affidavit.
You don't have an affidavit either, okay.
I don't know if anybody's here for the affidavit. Do, oh, so they might, I don't know if they have one.
And can you come up and? Can you announce yourself?
Regina DeSimone. I work at Davis Landscape Design, and we did the outdoor patio and landscaping.
Okay, and I'm just going to swear you in. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing to the truth? But before we get to anything, I've got questions for you as far as the posting, we don't have affidavits, we didn't have proper posting on the site, how are we going to address this? Because really, this hearing should be postponed as a result of that.
Okay.
So-
I dropped off, are you talking about the mailings?
Yes.
I dropped them off. I, I gave her my copies and everything, but I do have three, ah, thank you, three neighbors that said, "No problem."
Okay, we, that's getting to the specifics of the case, which we're not ready to do yet, so let's, let's address the posting and see if we can have this hearing, that's all.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, the, based off the affidavit, I don't know about the posting on the property, but the mailings were done properly. They were sent out on September 12th.
Sorry.
So I think one, one other issue is that the posting we saw was low to the ground, it wasn't, it wasn't clear where it was, and-
It was not a public hearing notice. You can see right there through the grass, that's what they had posted, and it was not, it was a Davis landscaping-
Yeah.
-sign with a little insert, they had the, like, the public hearing fold, folded up inside it, but there was no public hearing notice posted. I went several times, and-
Okay. So that's, that's an issue, right? So that, that we need to have a clear posting up, off on the stakes, or everybody that drives by, everybody, neighbors, everybody can see it, and that's not, that's not a clear example.
You must have gotten the correct postings from the town, right, to put up there.
Yeah, I laminated the one that came in the, in the packet that you sent, laminated it, and we taped it up to that sign right there, which-
But the town also, the town also gives you a bigger sign that you're supposed to put in a prominent location so people can see it, for the public, and that wasn't done.
Okay.
So I think, I think, I can't see into that, what I think that is in there is this, is this.
Right, right.
This was-
But that doesn't count.
Yeah, no, I understand. I think there was a confusion there, I'm sure, but-
Counsel, do you have a suggestion of how we should proceed?
I mean, it's up to you guys, they're here, I mean, the mailings ran out for a month and a half, so.
All right, so this is similar, we're going to, we're going to have to, if we do have the hearing this evening, we are going to request that it be properly posted for the correct period of time, and to see if we get any neighbor correspondence.
Okay.
And you would have to go into the office and ask Julie to give you the posting, it's not mailed, you have to go into the office and get it, and post it on your property for 10 days.
I will do that, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay. Do you want to share the rest?
Well, we have our report, so you can sit down for it.
Well, I don't really agree that we should- I don't really agree that we should do that, but I told you that.
For the record, I do not want to proceed with the hearing. I want to hear what my fellow board members have to say, because of improper posting.
It's very similar to the first hearing, no?
I think in this case, and, and I'm just gonna say this, we have, the, the planning department is down a secretary. And that secretary has been very helpful to people, applicants, that are not accustomed to the procedures in the property. It's usually the secretary that answers those questions and shows them and repeats that. Because we're, in my opinion, because we have that lacking right now, that I think there is special occasion for us to continue with this and be fair, because we just don't have that support in the town. And so I would recommend we continue with the hearing.
So we don't care if people post till our secretary comes back? Well, may I? I think it's very similar to what we just talked about in the first application. I think if there wasn't an affidavit, I would have a problem with going forward. But it does appear there was an affidavit, and there was an attempt to post. So I think if we leave it open till November 18th and you do post the property, it would be similar to what we already did. And I would be okay to go ahead.
Well, I, I was out there, and it's clearly not posted, and I think the public should have a reasonable opportunity to react to any posting on any property we have. Now, I'll yield to what you're recommending if you think that that's the proper way to move forward, but we've had this happen now a few times. So if we go through this hearing and it's properly posted for an extended period of time, and then they can come back in, I suppose we've actually done that several times before this. But I was out with Member Berger, and it is unfortunate that we're having a hearing where the neighbors have no, no knowledge of what's going on. Seems really an unfortunate thing that we've had this come up a number of times. If we move forward with it and we keep it open, I guess it's in keeping with what we've done in other places, but I'm not comfortable that we keep doing this over and over.
I agree.
We have to stop it. I say that every week, but if we're gonna do this one last time, I don't know. I want it left open until November 18.
That's fine.
And I want the applicant back in here for questions, not just, "Has anybody called up?" November 18.
Okay.
Okay. That's fair.
Okay, can we have a report?
Oh, yeah. Half of them are the posting. Different angles, it's how it wasn't there. It's not the correct one, anyway. Go ahead, Morgan, go through them. There's four of them. That's as close as you can get, and you'd have to crawl under there to see it. Okay, keep going. Another angle. And next. So nobody could see that. Even if they could, it wasn't right. Anyway, okay, now we have a front view of the house itself. And then I'm gonna go to the back, which is where the patio is that's in question tonight. Next. This is a gate. It's actually six foot also, and I just put that out there, because I don't know if that's been a permitted gate. It may, may or may not be. I know we did get the existing conditions in today, but I haven't really a chance to look at it. Yeah, front yard. Yeah, front yard. Next. And now I'm gonna walk to the back. It's the rear patio. You see, if you see where those seats are, the benches, the bench to the right, that's kind of parallel to the walkway, is the south side. And the one directly in front, if you continue walking, is the east side of the property. Next. This is just another shot. This is a shot, I believe it's from the northern side of the patio, and that's its distance from the, the rear deck, the east, east deck, the east property line. And next. This is a shot I took from the northern side of that patio and shooting straight ahead. And it's the setback from the, the left side that you see there. And directly forward, beyond those grasses, it's the, the south side variance that's And I think there might be one more shot. Next. That's just another shot of the rest of the yard out there. But that may be it. Is that it?
The, the photo that you had of the fence, where was that?
The front, front yard, the front, front gate.
On the front property line?
On the front property line? No, it's back from the front property line.
Oh, I see. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna stop you guys now. It has nothing to do with this application, so let's just not even talk about it. Not worth it.
I just, I just wanted to know, because we...
It's also behind the house, so it's not even an ARB issue, so, but let's not bring it up.
Okay. Come on up. All right, you are swearing in, sworn in, so go ahead.
Our procedure, before we start any design, is to contact the building department, find out specifics about anything about the property that we should know about. And we had our plans plotted on a survey, and the survey was approved. And we did 10-foot instead of 15. I don't know where that mistake happened, but it was approved. And on top of that, we did go over just a little bit, and that was during the building. And it was just, technically, I think it's a few inches that ended up. But now, because we found out it was actually supposed to be 15 feet, but there's a lot going on there. We have a lot of screening. We have fencing. We have beautiful vegetation, green giants. The property, I mean, it's a very small family. It's just a husband, wife, and one child. It's a low-traffic area. The step that would be in question, because the deck would probably be okay, but then there's a step down, and that is a step to nowhere. Nobody's gonna use it. It's more aesthetic. And it is heavily screened. Everything is in concrete, really built well, so if we were to tear it apart, it would cause the neighbors more distress than, I mean, it is beautiful and it's quiet. They're a very quiet couple, little baby. See what else I can tell you about that property? But, but just if you would look at the plans submitted and the proposed survey before it was built, you'll notice that everything was 10-foot.
So you're, you're, you did the landscape design and submitted for the building permit, and your design showed 10-foot? But don't you know, as a designer, you're supposed to meet, as you submit, you're supposed to meet a required setback? So your plan is, would seem to be wrong to begin with.
Well, first, we, as soon as we get approval on, you know, the client sign their contract, we'll go in and ask all about the property. When we were told 10 feet, we submitted 10 feet, and that was it.
You were told by whom? Building Department?
They got a permit for 10 feet.
They said they got a permit?
They got a permit for 10 feet.
I was gonna say they got a permit, but, but again, it...
Well, it's a, it's a weird situation, I think. I, I talked to Allison about it, because there is sometimes, it depends on the building inspector, I think, on how they interpret if it's attached to the house or not. Because sometimes patios aren't attached to the house. You know, if it's not attached to the house, it doesn't need 15 feet. If it is, it does. So it's one of those weird, and it's, if you look at a survey, it's attached, sorta.
That's gonna be my question, actually, but I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, mine, too.
It's like it's barely...
Kind of a catty, it's like corner to corner.
Right. Is it, is it, I'm looking at, it's the very corner of the patio. And again, unfortunately, they're like, the dimensions are not like to the sideline and stuff on here. But, but is that, am I looking at that correctly? It's that very little corner on the northwest side of, that attached is to the very small corner of the house? Is that what I'm looking at?
To another patio.
Oh, it's to another?
Yeah, and the patio is attached to the house. I brought detailed plans as well, if you'd like.
Because I can't hold on.
And, and stamped copies of the, of the original submitted.
So the as-built actually didn't come out at 10 feet as well. It's at 8.1?
Yes.
8.8, 9.3. So you're attributing that to builder error? What is that about?
Yes, unfortunately.
And you're attributing the 10 feet to building department error?
That's what, unfortunately, it seems, yes. It was what was told to us, and that's how we designed it. Never to have it. We've been in business 25 years, and I've been with the company for 10, and I've never had a, a situation like this ever.
Yeah, it's in the TAM that they had the permit with 10-foot.
Did your company construct?
I just want it on the record.
Did your company do the construction on it?
We, we hire subcontractors.
Any other questions?
I actually have to go see. I didn't, I didn't go on the property, because I didn't think we were gonna proceed tonight with no posting, so I will go in that next period to understand the configuration better of the deck.
I'll make sure the postings go up tomorrow. Sorry.
Any other questions?
With you from the planner.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Morgan Slater again for the planning department. So the patio was constructed under a building permit that was issued in 2024, and it looks like in those plans that there is a 10-foot setback for this patio. 255-11S10 does say that any patios attached to the principal residence need to meet the principal building setback. That is what this is noticed for tonight. How that is enforced or how it's implemented, I think, is not consistent with the building department. So that could be why, you know, there was a building permit issued for it meeting 10-foot. It is a small area attached to the house itself. If there's a certain threshold, I'm not aware of it. So it's just noticed for the greater variance tonight.
Morgan, can you just go there and point, point on the survey exactly where we're talking?
I don't even, I don't know what that dimension is, but it's this little tiny...
That's what it's attached.
That is where it's attached.
And right where you were pointing?
Where am I?
Patio, walkways don't need to meet setbacks. Patio don't...
In here.
And then it's attached to the house there.
And then just where you're pointing, that, that left edge of the patio, what is it? Is it attached to another deck or no? That's open?
I, I think this is some more stonework here. And then there's a bit of lawn, and then the entryway to that.
So it's not like part of a whole other deck system?
I don't believe it's a whole sprawling patio.
Thank you.
That's the 8.8 side, right? The south side.
Yeah, because I don't see the, the setbacks on the survey.
Yeah, it was measured with a scale, a scalable survey.
I know, but...
Any other questions for Morgan?
No.
No, thank you. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you, Morgan. Is there anybody in the public like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
We have the same caller from last time. Let's do it again. And we actually have one more caller, so stand by.
After us.
And...
My call.
0... Hello, 0381. You are live.
The last one after us. Here we are.
Hello, 0381. Hello, 0... Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute them, because they were talking about some other stuff. And let's go on to the next caller, which is 5583. You are live.
Hello, caller. Are you... This is Jonathan Davis calling. Can you hear me?
Are you here for this application?
Yes, I am.
And, and can you announce who you are, where your address?
Yeah, this is Jonathan Davis from Davis Landscape Design. I'm just calling just to help, answer any questions you may have. I've been unable to be there tonight because of childcare, but I just wanted to let you know that we did our very best to stick to the, the guidelines that we've taken from the building department. And one of the reasons, I think, that we've had an issue here is the survey was, was very small, which resulted in some discrepancies. I think that's where the, the small discrepancy came from the 10-foot setback to what was actually built. But also, it was a pretty steep incline on the original build, and there was a very heavily dense, sorry, very heavily vegetated bamboo clump in that corner, and it was incredibly hard to see exactly where that property line was marked. So I think for the, just speaking for the installer, that's where that error may have come. But regardless, you know, we're just, we're really looking for some verification on, on advice that was given that we followed, and then trying to get a, the permit closed, finding out that we have this, this issue here. So that's all I have to say.
Could I, I just want to clarify the coverage on this? So I make sure, because, sorry, this, for some reason, this photo, this surveyor is not as familiar to me. So can you remind us what the, because it says a proposed lot coverage, and then it says total, just lot coverage? I can't remember what the maximums are. So are they within...
Yeah, hold on, I, I think I have that in the TAM.
Is it in the TAM? I thought, did I miss it in the TAM? I'm sorry. If it's in the TAM, then I'll go back and try and get it. So I'm just used to seeing a survey that shows...
I think it's 33% proposed lot coverage and 21.24% lot coverage.
I think 50% is a max for total lot coverage.
Okay, it's 50, and, okay, that's all I...
Yeah, it was complying.
I couldn't remember for a lot this size. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think we can close this, right?
Well, we can close it.
No, we can't close. Well, we can let motion...
Did you say that you had letters from the neighbors? Did you, did you submit those to anybody?
No.
Okay, they should submit.
The originals and the copies.
You should submit them.
You should submit those. Yeah, just drop them off tomorrow, because we're keeping the record open, so.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
So for the application of Jordan Brinken Inez Salemmi at 49 Gull Road in Montauk, tax map 300-10-6-5, make a motion to close the public hearing. We leave, well, not closing the public hearing either, right? Continue the public hearing on November 18th, once the, for proper posting and public response if any.
I'm keeping the record open.
Yes. I understand you would have to come back on November 18th.
Thank you. Oh, we didn't have a second. We need a second.
Oh, you made the motion right there. Second.
Concur.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have 621 Lazy Point LLC, 621 Lazy Point Amagansett, subtax map number 300-106S2-39.3. Size and location is 232,638 square feet. 621 Lazy Point Baywoods at Montapee, Lot 3, map number 9536, filed July 4th, 1994. Amagansett. The description is to construct a 720-square-foot addition, a 600-square-foot garage with an adjacent storage room, a 158-square-foot covered porch, and a 7,200-square-foot tennis court on a parcel of land containing freshwater wetlands, tidal wetlands, barrier dunes, beaches, and surface waters. The relief is a natural resources special, 55420, and a variance from 255440 of the East Hampton Town Code. A variance of 16 feet is required to construct the addition, 134 feet from the primary dune crest, where 150 feet is required, any, any other relief necessary. The zoning district is A2 Residence AE Flood Zone, elevation 10. The secret class is type 2. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service?
Yeah, I reviewed the affidavits and notes of the posting, and everything seems to be in order for this one. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you.
So for probably four decades, I've always wanted to know what was up this road, and now I know. So it was properly posted close to Lazy Point Road. Obviously, Lazy Point Road is far from where the property is, but that's the proper place to post it. Next slide. Just to you, this is the sort of dirt road driveway that you proceed. You proceed first next to, I think, a different property, and you keep going. Next slide. So now I'm actually on the property. My back is to the house. I've come up the driveway. You can see where the gate is that lets you in, in the, in the distance there. So now I'm actually on the property. My back is to the house. I've come up the driveway. You can see where the gate is that lets you in in the in the distance there. Once you get onto this contained part of the property, it's more landscaped and but it is still very heavily vegetated. Next slide. Okay, so now my back is to that gate at the top of the driveway. This is a partial view of the, it's mostly the front facade to the left. I don't know if I took a picture of it. Off there is sort of the pool and a bit of a pavilion attached to the house. The area on the left that has the peaked roof facing out, that I think to that is where the addition will be will be added on. Next slide. Oh, I did take a picture of the pool area to the left, just to the left of the house. And the vegetation there, obviously, it's lawn. There'll be some extension of driveway. Actually, it'll be probably behind where I am, but towards that side as well. Next slide. Okay, so I've gone over to the area that's probably somewhere between or where the well, this is basically the area where we're going to have the disturbance as I can think about it from the survey. It's where the addition will be, and then there'll be, I think, a patio or a garden space, right? And then further towards where the, you know, towards the south will be the proposed garage. And I took a few shots in here because the topography starts to drop off, but I think that it's pretty much area that's just, even though it's vegetated, I think there's a lot of ornamental vegetation. And I think I'm sure you'll talk about what exactly is being cleared and, you know, what type of veg, but it's, this is part of the area, I think, that will be in play with the additions. Next slide. Yeah, sort of more of the same. I'm, it's hard to see. The topography does start to drop off. This is on more of the east side, east side of the of the, towards the east side property line. But I don't think the extensions are going to necessarily impact that drop off. I'll get close to it, I would imagine. But next slide. Yeah, sort of more of that area, just to get a real flavor of what's going to be disturbed by the changes, proposed changes. Next slide. Yeah, I have my back. My back is really right to that facade of the house where the extension is going to be. Again, sort of more about the area that will be taken up by the extension. Next slide. I think the area in the distance is partially, I can't really tell where I am right now, maybe where the extension of the driveway will go. Next slide. Okay, now I'm just heading, I'm heading towards the rear of the house. That's the east side, east facade of the house. Next slide. I did want to go to the back, even though really the back isn't in play. I did want to have a look at the scenic easement and just the condition of it. So it's pretty tight clearing to the rear facade of the house. And then the, all the area that I can tell in the scenic easement is sort of well protected. Next slide. My back is to the scenic easement, and that's the rear of the house. Next slide. You go through this small gate, and that's the path that is running through the scenic easement. It's a very narrow path. It goes down to the water. Again, I mean, the vegetation was, I think, pretty pristine, you know, relative to that area. It's been, I think, well looked after and well conserved. Next slide. Yeah, just heading down to the water. One more slide for that. Yeah, again, just really wanted to show the quality of this dune land and the scene and the scenic easement. I think I have one more shot really at the water. You can see that there is some beach. Oh, maybe I maybe I missed it. Okay, so that's fine. What I did now is I've left the this area of the house, and I'm going to go, you can go to the next slide. I'm sorry. What I did is I went now down back towards Lazy Point. I went down past the main scenic easement in the middle of the property and back, I think, to towards where the tennis court is going to be. And I didn't go into the scenic easement, just driving by it. Again, it looks very much intact, and there's wetland in there. So as you're heading back towards south, before you leave the edge of the property, there is a little dirt road that runs in from that main dirt road. I think I'm in the right place. So I went down that road. You can, which is cleared path, whatever you want to call it. Next slide. Yeah, and as you get a little further in, the area becomes a bit more open. Next slide. I think I took one shot. All right, so my back is to the south, and I'm in a ways onto this kind of dirt, it's earth road. And I'm looking up at this area, and you can tell me if I'm correct. I think this is the area where the tennis court, no, not where the tennis court's going to be? Already on the neighbor's property? Oh, I thought I was on the road, then I missed. Okay, it was hard to navigate. I thought I thought the elephants were to my back, so. Yeah, okay. So then I guess I'm not able to tell where the, I was trying to just take a photo of what was being cleared and what the condition was. Sorry about that. I thought that road that I went down was coming. Oh, well, I'm right on that road. Oh, I see where, okay, I got it. Okay. All right. Well, then, on that road, I was passing the area. Forgive me, it was a little hard to navigate.
Hey, thank you.
That's it.
How are you, Rick?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Whalen from Whalen Firelor PLLC represent the applicant, which is 621 Lazy Point LLC, but actually has a human person, people behind it. One of the owners, Tim, is with us tonight. Terry Feister is the architect. So if you have questions that require Terry's intervention, he's here. I'll bet that member Mary, when she went down there, because that is kind of a cool place to go, but I bet you didn't expect to run into elephants down there.
Are we going to get a report how the PIMS are doing? There's those points.
Very well, apparently. I'll mention I'll mention that. Yeah, they seem to be doing well.
Yeah, so I did take a picture of the beach. It's somehow.
There's nothing, there's nothing projecting.
No, no.
Can't see anything. You don't know that the system, the system buried there.
And and the beaches.
Seems to be accreting. I'll mention it briefly, but.
Yeah, yeah, go.
So let me just, so the the application, you know where the property is, of course. I just want to hit the elements of the application, just so we know that we're covering everything. So there's a one-story house addition. We computed a 600 square feet. In the in the planning department's TAM, it's referred to as 720 square feet. It's actually a first floor 600 square feet, which is 22 and a half by 26 and two thirds feet. But there is a, I consider it an attic. You might disagree, but I think it's an attic. There's a 136 square foot mechanical space above that first floor ceiling. And that's accessed from the gable portion of the main existing house. So it's either a 600-square-foot addition, if you consider the mechanical area above to be to be an attic, or I guess it's 720 to 736 square feet. There is also on the south side of that addition, there's 158 square foot covered porch. There is then just south of that, there's a proposed, again, these are proposed structures. There's a walled garden. The walled garden is actually completely outside, for what it's worth, completely outside NRSB jurisdiction. Then just to the south of that would be the 600-square-foot detached garage. It's essentially a two-bay garage, although the applicants are planning to use one bay for storage. There is the, there's a walkway on the east side of the house addition and the east side of the garage. There is a slight enlargement to the stone parking area. There's a new IA low nitrogen septic system, and I say new, the existing septic serving the house is not a low nitrogen system. So the system that would be installed is a low nitrogen system, and it's obviously sized for the proposed number of bedrooms. And finally, there is the tennis court in a separate building envelope at the southern end of the property. So the house right now has four bedrooms. The addition includes two bedrooms. One of the existing bedrooms in the in the house right now, that exists right now, is proposed to be converted into a study. So the net increase in the number of bedrooms is one, from four to five. It would make the house a five-bedroom house. Currently, it's four. The change in GFA, again, I'm using my figure for the addition of 600 square feet, which is the first floor and the only habitable portion of the addition. The GFA in the house would increase from 3,844 square feet to 4,444 square feet. Bear in mind, the lot in total area is 5.34 acres in size, so it's a it's a large lot. The relief what we need, we need a natural resources special permit for most of the improvements. We need a dune crest setback variance of 16 feet, where 150-foot setback applies for the house addition. Curious note, the house addition does not need an NRSB. Interesting. And I'd recheck that. But the NRSB jurisdiction only extends 100 feet from the dune crest, or more than 150 feet from the wetlands. So the house addition, which is the most important part of the project, does need a 16-foot dune crest setback variance, but it doesn't need an NRSB.
I thought the TAM said it was 136 feet.
Yeah, I think it's 100. Yeah, the setback is 136 from the dune crest, but dunes and the dune crest setback requirement is 150 feet. Hence, we need, what did I say, 134 feet? 100. I think it's 134 feet back, so we need a 16-foot variance. And finally, there are two vegetable planter boxes. Let me hand up photos, because I wanted to show you both photos of the planter boxes and also just the state of the dune itself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
The point of the photographs I've given you is just to point out that the dune itself in front of the property is very well established. In 2021, you approved the so-called PEM system. It basically is tubes that improve the drainage, sort of like baseball stadium drainage or something like that, except on a beach. And from what I've heard, and you have two reports from, what is it, Eco Beach International or something like that? Eco Shore International. So you have a report that was submitted to file from 2024 and 2025. Bottom line, it appears to be working. It appears to be leading to the increase in the retention of sand. As they describe in the report, a wetter beach tends to lose more sand as waves wash out. There's science behind this. It's a little over my head, but, you know, it does seem to be working. And both the report and my clients confirm that the dune has actually been building up, and the beach seems to be accreting. So that's good. So we seem to have a much more stable situation than we had in the early part of this of this century. So the one thing I need to bring up that is not really mentioned in here, kind of new, is I had submitted a letter to the board, the lot area calculations on the survey were wrong. Not going to blame the surveyor for that, because there's a kind of a reason why they were what they were. Those same lot area calculations were shown on the filed subdivision map in 1984, 1994. What happened is the original surveyor, Billy Walsh, subtracted the full area of the scenic easement. You don't subtract the scenic easement from a lot for zoning lot area purposes. You subtract wetlands, you subtract the beach, you know, everything seaward of the dune crest, you subtract the access driveway. You don't subtract the lot area, the scenic easement itself. I had a conversation with your counsel today, and he pointed out that in the subdivision regulations, there's actually a slightly different definition of lot area. And they refer to just easements in general that prohibit directionability. It's not just private easements. Now, I do know the planning board, in reviewing subdivisions, does not exclude the area easements that it's proposing to have or requesting. But in any event, there's perhaps a reason why the surveyor got it wrong. All the way along, you know, coming down to Terry and doing his design, he assumed the lot area was the smaller figure of around 92,000 square feet. Why am I mentioning this? When you go from 92,000 square feet to 157,000 square feet, which was what happens when you de-exclude the area of the scenic easement that is not wetlands, you jump to a different category in terms of your yard setbacks. So the yard setbacks that this was predicated on for the principal building were 30 feet, but the actual setback for 157,000 square foot lot is 35 feet. And the proposed addition is toward 34 feet from the east property line. So your hearing notice, and I talked to your counsel about this this afternoon, your hearing notice contains language that it covers what's noticed in the hearing and any other relief necessary. So my position, and I think your counsel agrees with me, is that you have jurisdiction to grant a one-foot side yard variance for the addition. None of the other structures are implicated. All of them meet the setbacks, even under the the higher lot area number, but the the principal building addition, the setback is supposed to be 35 feet, and it's built to 34.
Does that mean the principal building existing is?
Looks like the principal building's at 34 feet.
Huh, because you're matching you're matching that line, basically.
The the addition is built just to follow that line?
Yeah.
Because I did ask Terry, I said, well, what happens if I have to move it? You don't want to do that. So I think you have the power. Let me, let me, like, could just hit the area variance standards, just so I cover them. Will the will the grant of the variances create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties? Again, we're seeking one foot, sounds like a one-foot side yard variance for the addition. The addition is only 600 square feet. In terms of the coastal setback variance, obviously, the addition is being built entirely behind the landward of the existing house. The dune fronting house is in very good condition at the moment, and so I would posit that a 16-foot variance out of 150-foot requirement is not going to impact the neighborhood. I do want to make one other thing on this, because I did get three calls from the neighbor to the east, and they were very worried about losing the vegetative buffer between their property and ours. But we are too. So you'll, as you saw from a member marrying's photographs, the east side of the property is very heavily vegetated. Now, we are changing the grade a little bit. We have to push out. You'll see the topographical lines on the survey. I guess, you know, as we to flatten everything for the addition and the garage, we do have to move into that area a little bit. That will be vegetated. The plan is to have a solid buffer of vegetation, and right now, a lot of it is non-native, but we still would have a solid buffer of vegetation protecting us from the neighbor to the east. We don't want to be clearing that at all. Can the benefits from the requested variance be sought by any means other than an area variance? This is kind of like the fifth standard, which is, you know, one of the reasons that that led you to request a variance. There's no really alternative, because if you're going to build an addition as we propose, the entire existing house is within the 150-foot dune crest setback. So we can't attach to the house without having a portion of it be with 150 feet of dune crest, so we have no choice but to to seek a variance. Are the variances sought substantial? Well, the dune crest setback variance is a little over 10% of the required 150-foot setback. And again, I would posit that we're not in any way endangered by building there, because the existing house is already between us and the required and the dune crest. And finally, in terms of the side yard setback that we believe now that we need, that's a one-foot variance from a 35-foot requirement. It's basically de minimis. It's about 3% or less than 3% of the required setback. And lastly, will the variances have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or in this area of the town? I don't think I need to address that with regard to the one-foot east side variance, but the the house addition being built on the landward side of the house with respect to the dune crest. Again, you have reports showing that the remediation that's been done, the installation of this PEN system, PEM system, seems to be restoring the beach or at least limiting further erosion. The dune is in good shape, and the addition, of course, again, is on the landward side of the existing house. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Question of my, the lot area differential that you were talking about, does that affect the setbacks for the tennis courts?
No, because the setback meets 50-foot setbacks. The setback changes from 40 feet to 50 feet. But remember, all tennis courts, when adjoining residential property, have to have at least a 50-foot setback. So our existing tennis court setbacks for 50 feet are a little over, so it has no impact on the tennis court.
Any other questions?
Yeah, in terms of the construction itself, I was looking through your notes earlier today, and I'm just looking again now. Did you introduce a construction protocol for this and how we're going to move forward with the construction? I'd like to know how you're going to access the water side of the property, and you're going to be working on the east side. You talked about the heavy vegetation. You know, there's not a protocol for us to review and say, well, we understand. I'm also wondering, is it concrete puddings here? Concrete, no pilings, just concrete puddings?
Only for the proposed garage.
We have to sign you in.
Just announce who you are. I gotta swear you in.
Hi, my name is Terry Feister. I'm the architect.
Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm just asking the question about looking at this drawing. I don't see pilings spacked out for any of this construction, so I'm asking, was there any piling plan that we don't see, or you're not doing pilings? You're just doing concrete?
Just concrete for the for the garage. Just concrete for the for the garage. Pilings are going to be for the the house extension.
Excuse me, say that again. I'm sorry. For the what?
Pilings for the house extension.
Yeah, house extension is going to have pilings. Okay. So you're going to be you're going to be driving or you're going to be doing helical piles on the ocean side, on the water side?
Uh, it's going to be wood piling the same way.
Wood piling. So you're going to have to get a piece of equipment back there to drive this. So protocol in terms of what are we looking at for potential collateral damage on the water side of the house? Now, it's been brought up and the photos are excellent and I was out on the site. It's wonderfully vegetated at, there's a slightly cleared area you have there beyond the house. However, when you go to add on that direction, what are we doing there other than just a protective fencing that will be required? What are we doing in terms of protocol to know that we're not going to be encouraging any other damage on that part of the site? Do you see what I'm saying? We're always asking ourselves, how do we move forward with this? Very sensitive site, difficult spot to get to, and you're going to have to bring in the kind of equipment that may do some other damage. So my question is, is there, has there been any thought to producing a protocol that would describe it? Sometimes we ask for the the size of the equipment, how it can be limited, what are you going to do with materials, things like that. This is a site that, when you go in, is impressive for the reasons. Some of it is ornamental, but still there's a lot of native vegetation. I want, I'd like to know what is the procedure from here on out to ensure that when you're done, we haven't done any collateral damage that we'd be very sorry for because we didn't ask these questions. Okay?
Well, I believe the first uh, person to be sorry if there is any damage would be the client because the house and the property is the buffer between the construction site and the the pristine like beach and dune area. So like, you know, it is our primary care to really protect the house and much of the property to do the piling and not to damage whatever is existing there. So there is a lot of construction that is happening all at one point, which is like to relocate the septic and to put the piling right in that location. And that, uh, we don't have anything to tell you of like, what are we going to do to protect it yet? Because we want to make sure like, you know, you are on board with us to like, you know, agree on this project.
Are pilings even required? Because you're an A E.
Yeah, I didn't see it though. I didn't see what happened, John, on the map.
Uh, yeah, I didn't understand what what's happening.
Uh, your your notice is A E. Your notice is uh, A E elevation ten.
Yeah.
But still, you're A E. I'm not sure pilings are required. Your required pilings in V E.
The when we hit the um, the house, um, we did everything on piling when we did the ten years ago, the first house extension. The pool and everything like, and we did piling. Yeah. For the uh, for the, we did um, the the drill, uh, the bone test on the land and everything, and we we did everything on piling. And then the, yes.
A E elevation ten to the planning department's TAM.
Correct.
And you're right, we wouldn't be required to have pilings in the A E zone.
Go ahead. And I'm sorry.
Well, no, that's right. Yeah, just back to that point, though. You, uh, when you come in, you see the property, you're going to be clearing vegetation where the future garage is going to be. And that's going to become your access point to get to the rear of the house or the water side of the house if you had to drive pilings.
But no, 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 the additions are on the landward side of the house. They're not going to the lot.
Very confused. Everything is happening in the front of the house.
Okay, I then I got, I went, when I went out there, I looked at that back overhang and I thought that's what we were talking about. I'm sorry.
Happening seaward. Nothing. Everything is like in the front of the house.
You can see the green area of the survey. It's the landward side of the house. Yes, the bay.
What is the latest survey? I have a couple of them.
There. The um, that was given to the office and
Uh, the giveaway is when you turn to the lot area calculation on the left side. It now says lot area per town code, one hundred and fifty seven thousand, two hundred and eighty five. It's late last week, so let me see if I have any revision data here that's large enough for me to read.
The lot area size is what, two?
Yeah, the lot area now says lot area per town code, one hundred and fifty seven thousand, two hundred and eighty five square feet.
I don't think we have that, that, yeah.
It was submitted, uh, it was submitted to the board, I think, Thursday of last week, probably.
Okay, this one's from April. The one I have is from April.
And that's really the only change. I don't think anything else would change in terms of what's proposed.
Can I, so may I ask about the tennis court? So the tennis court is not in N R S P jurisdiction or is it?
The tennis court is in within N R S P jurisdiction. For the wetland, that's in the center of the lot.
Okay, so um, so because I went too far on that road and I looked at what was more of an open field, I was a little like, oh, that's nice. It's not, there's not going to be as much
Clearing.
dropping of trees. But now it's a little, so can you just talk through, I'm just uh, I see, I see the, it's hard to read, the proposed additional clearing line goes right up to the tennis court. Is that what I'm reading? So you're only clearing really for the area of the tennis court in that area?
Yeah, that's.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I see the building envelope profiled map, but it says proposed additional clearing seventy seven hundred square feet. But that's the the area in white around the green tennis court underneath the green scenic easement. Is that, that all remains the natural vegetation as is? And so the composition basically of what you're dropping in that seventy seven hundred, is it a lot of mature trees? I think it was more?
Um, I didn't, I drove down the same road that you did. But I didn't have to admit I didn't look too closely. It's kind of, you know, it's kind of thin pitch pine woods. Uh, so I think there were some mature pitch pines, but I didn't take any photographs back there.
So what about drainage for the tennis court? Where's that, where's that living? Yeah, you're going to have to drain it, right? You're gonna, yeah. So where's, where are we going to, where are we going to put those dry wells and whatever if you're, if you are?
We're probably going to put those like, you know, where you have the little like stone pathways. So like, you know, we're going to 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 build the tennis court, like to access the um, machinery, we're going to put it like right there, I guess, to minimize the impact on the land.
Be lighting the tennis court?
Paras material, this is going to be.
Where are you bringing access in?
We're going to follow the the dirt road, like.
The earth road? Earth road, yeah.
This is an existing dirt road here. And then this is a little like pathway.
Yeah.
We know, we don't want to damage that, you know.
It's it's in, it's in prestige shape. It's beautiful.
We're going to do the really, the minimum and it's going to be clear that the really, really minimum we have to put that in place.
There's a lot of wildlife in there, I would imagine. So are you planning on lighting the tennis court at night or no?
Any other questions, board members?
I do not.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rick.
We're good, but I don't know. But it seemed to me like the question was like um, a misunderstanding of the project because we, everything we're going to do is like landward.
So my, no, so given, given, given that the, you know, we're not doing anything on the landward side of the seaward side of the house. My question is, do you want a construction protocol? I mean, if we, if you needed one, we could produce one.
I, uh, let's just be clear about this. Because I'm, I agree, I don't know if it really requires one because it's this, it's only this area right here.
Yeah.
This is the house there and they're adding on this addition with this court and then the garage is here. And that's already.
We're kind of be working out of the area that's currently the parking lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot less sensitive than I thought. My mis- misunderstood. And I went to that back overhang and I was working back and forth, looking at dimensions in there, wondering how you're going to get back there. That's just my bad, that's a poor take on my.
If you guys work off of the survey, which is really, really complicated to read, it's like, I admire you because like I took, I don't know if you have like my other drawings, I, what I've done for you, I like analyzed the survey for you at. In the reading, you can see the setbacks, you can see the vegetation, you can see the easements, you can see like the water duration. All line up in different ways. So you understand why the project is the way it is. And it's impossible even for myself to read that survey. It takes me hours. I don't know how you do it like in ten minutes. It's a pretty loaded survey.
Thank you.
We really keep the project around what is right now, like the um, the driveway. And then here, where you have the septic. This is the location of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah Lewis for the planning department.
Hi, Sarah. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, so the applicant is requesting a natural resources special permit to construct the tennis court uh, within a hundred and fifty feet of wetlands and a sixteen foot variance to construct the addition, a hundred and thirty four feet from the primary dune crest where a hundred and fifty feet is required and any other relief necessary. The applicant is proposing to construct a seven hundred and twenty square foot addition, a six hundred square foot garage and adjacent storage room, a one hundred and fifty eight square foot covered porch and a seventy two hundred square foot tennis court. The most recent C of O was issued in two thousand and sixteen for the residence and accessory structures, which was originally constructed in two thousand and one, um, which at the time was located more than a hundred and fifty feet from the primary dune crest and beyond N R S P jurisdiction. Uh, the proposed addition meets pyramid and is located on the landward side of the house. Um, as the applicant stated, an additional one point four foot variance is required for the garage, um, which does not meet setbacks given the updated lot area. Um, all of the properties are accessed by a common driveway and have shore frontage along Napeek Bay. The entire area is relatively low lying coastal habitat with wetlands throughout. The building envelopes on the property are bisected by substantial freshwater wetlands and a scenic easement covers the shoreline and the freshwater wetland to the south of the structure. The G F A of the existing house is three thousand eight hundred forty four square feet, um, with the potential addition adding um, about seven hundred twenty, bringing total G F A to four thousand five hundred sixty four square feet, uh, which is well below the limit. Uh, the proposed application does include some clearing, uh, including thirty seven hundred square feet for the proposed home and driveway expansions. Uh, the applicant also proposes the construction of a seventy two hundred square foot tennis court, which would require an additional, an additional seven thousand, seven hundred square foot of clearing. Um, allowable clearing on this property, given the new lot area calculations, is forty nine thousand, three hundred twenty one square feet, while the applicants are proposing to bring clearing to thirty two thousand, four hundred sixty seven square feet. So they're still below the clearing limit.
Can you repeat that second number?
Yeah, sure. Um, they're bringing clearing to thirty two thousand, four hundred sixty seven square feet. Uh, the D E C or Department Environmental Conservation has determined that the additions and accessory structures are out of their jurisdiction. Uh, but they did note that the northern long-eared bat has been documented within three miles of the project location. Uh, the D E C and planning department thus recommend no tree cutting between March first and November thirtieth of any calendar year. Um, the planning department has also provided a sketch of areas for project limiting and silt fence. Um, and I can bring that up if you guys want to see it. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Sarah.
I I just wanted to clarify a little bit. So your TAM says that the house was originally built more than a hundred and fifty feet from the dune crest.
Yeah, so.
But that's, did I read it right? The residence was initially constructed as and located more than a hundred and fifty feet from the primary dune. When I was reading the, in the conditions, existing conditions memo, I just happened to be reading the determination, I think it was for the PMS. And at the time, it said the residence is presently located sixty feet from the dune crest, crest. So I mean, I know the beach had eroded at some point, but I I just was a little.
Yeah, that's something I would have to double check.
Okay, just wanted to.
Thanks for pointing it out.
Okay. And then just so I I'm clear on the clearing, because she said the numbers quickly. The width, I guess, we're we're taking eleven thousand, four hundred square feet of more of additional clearing. So it is under the max, but it's like two percent under the, it's very close to the max now after the proposed.
Um, I think it's more than that. So the allowable clearing is forty nine thousand.
Oh, maybe now with the change in the.
Correct, yeah. So originally, under the old lot calculations, it was much closer to that maximum clearing.
That's right.
Yeah. Um, so the newest survey was submitted end of last weekend. It should be in the official file.
Okay.
Um, and that can be found on the webpage too.
Because under the old, it was like.
Absolutely, yeah. But it used to be a lot closer and now um, there's more of a buffer there.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in?
Clarification. Sarah said that, makes you mention that the garage would be the one point four foot side yard variance.
What?
Yeah, I think that's um.
It's it's shown as thirty three point three, but the setback is only twenty five feet even under the higher lot area.
Detached.
Yeah, detached, detached garage.
Oh, okay.
Accessory building.
Detached accessory structure. Yeah, it's twenty five, yeah.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public like to address this application? Rick, is her, uh?
My name is Matt. That's okay. Uh, we're going to give these, uh, this caller one more, two more chances. Zero, three, eight, one. You are alive.
Caller, are you here for this application?
You are alive once again, zero, three, eight, one.
Oh, caller. No.
Okay, you have zero additional callers.
Thank you. Rick, any closing remarks? You good? Okay, thank you. We have a motion.
Motion. Um, in the matter of six twenty one Lazy Point LLC, six twenty one Lazy Point Amagant, Lazy Point, I think it's Road, Amagant, Suffolk County Tax Map, three hundred dash one oh six dash oh two dash thirty nine point three. I make a motion to close the public hearing and close the record.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Nanette Johns at seventy fourth Surfside Avenue in Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map number three hundred dash fifty one dash four dash twelve. Is anybody here for this?
No. No. It's an interesting evening. How do we do this? Nope, doesn't look like it.
Did they submit their affidavit? Let me read it. It's easy enough that we could just do it if they've submitted their affidavit in their postings. Okay, let me, let's read it into the record and we'll see. Size and location is fifty eight thousand, four hundred and twenty two square foot at seventy four Surfside Avenue in Montauk. The description is to restore approximately seventy linear feet of eroded bluff by placing approximately fifteen hundred cubic yards of clean bluff, compatible fill and construct a four-foot wide bluff there. The restored bluff is to be planted with beach grass, twelve inch on center. Sand face is to be installed at the toe of the bluff. The relief saw is a natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty five, four twenty of the town code. And the zoning directive is be resident zone X one zone. The secret class is type two. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service?
No.
Huh?
They didn't submit anything. At this point, this is like, what, there's a third time they've done this?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I think we can deny without.
They're going to get kicked way back.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
We were queued up like this one other night.
It's the same thing happened a few months ago.
Yeah.
Probably in August, I think. Actually, you know what I do?
All right, so I mean, the the thing is, they're going to kick back the application. What are they going to do?
I thought we could deny without.
They have to reschedule it with the planning department. Well, it never opened it, so.
Yeah, we never opened it, so it's just.
Just adjourned for lack of service and no applicant and I don't know who's there. We should reach out to, we should reach out to their agent. First Coastal, Kelly Hoffman at First Coastal and be like, well.
They posted the property, right?
I don't know. I don't have anything.
Well, it was. Well, we, we had, we have, there's a photo they sent in of a, of a posting lying in the mud and a post that obviously must have come off of. So the answer is possibly, but the posting was impossible to read because it was soaked in. So is that.
It may have been from the first time.
Unless the callers are for the application, the people that's on the line.
This is mysterious.
We should, I mean, let's just ask.
Matt, is there somebody online still?
Yes, it's the same caller as the last hour.
I don't have any.
Let's uh, let's do this one more time. And zero three eight one, you are live.
Hello? Caller?
Zero three eight one, you are live.
So strange.
It's up to you, Mr. Chair.
We don't have, we don't have any, any postings or anything, right?
Just asking.
The other ones, we had something, they like, they got nothing.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move on. Thank you. Matt, if you want, you can hang up because we're going into our session.
Already hung up, go ahead, please.
Uh, next, we go into post hearing decisions. We have Elizabeth Alexandra Miller, Five Gannet Drive. Um, this one I was not part of, so I'm gonna step down, I'll let you uh, read it into the record. Are we doing Gannet first? I thought the other was first.
No, Gannet, that's what we're doing.
Yeah. Musical chairs. Let me get out of your way, John. Okay. We go on to post hearing decisions. The first one is Elizabeth Alexandra Miller, Five Gannet Drive, Montauk. Suffolk County Tax Map number three hundred dash four dash seven dash four. Description is to construct a four hundred ninety square foot swimming pool within minimum rear yard setbacks. Relief saw is one variance of twelve feet pursuant to two fifty-five eleven ten of the East Hampton Town Code to construct the swimming pool, eight feet from the rear eastern lot line where twenty feet is required. Zoning district is a B residence zone, X flood zone, secret class type two. Remember Johan?
Yes, but I'm gonna have a little bit of a problem here because I'm looking for my TAM. No one else has the TAM.
I have a TAM, you want a TAM?
When I finish up, thank you. It's in here somewhere. Thank you.
Miller.
Five Gannet Drive, remember that the hearing was September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The survey was received by the planning department, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, from Alfonso Pierce Land Surveyor. The, there was a pool plan submitted, dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four from Lab Crew Engineering. Lori Wilshire represented the applicant, Morgan Slater represented the planning department. This is a seventy-five by a hundred uh, lot. It's typical of the Colloden Shore subdivision, many small lots in there. Uh, one twelve foot variance is required from the eastern property line for this pool. CFO was issued for the house and a nine hundred square foot deck in nineteen sixty-six. Another CFO was issued for a forty-nine square foot hot tub in two thousand and nineteen. We received four letters of support from neighbors and one neighbor spoke in opposition. Lori Wilshire proposed that the pool is small, uh, basically a lap pool and that it is well screened from the most affected neighbors and that the house immediately to the east is currently unoccupied. Additionally, she stated that the pool could only be located where it is proposed because the second floor deck is attached to the residence but have to be removed to allow the pool to move far enough westward to eliminate the need for a variance and that was not a viable option for the applicant. The TAM pointed out that while there are other pools in the Colloden Shore's neighborhood, none have required a variance. Given the, given the constraints on the lot size and the relative position of the existing house and the attached deck on the parcel, there is not sufficient room to accommodate a pool in the, in this proposed location. Approval of this application would open the door, in my mind, open the door to similar applicants to expect the same type of relief, which could and most likely would have an impact on the character of the neighborhood. Not all parcels, given the extent that they have been previously developed, can accommodate every appurtenance, so this is one of those parcels in my opinion. The double setbacks uh, exist, double setback standards for pools exist for a reason. Allowing a pool to be constructed only eight feet from a property line is not at all in keeping with the town code, with, with the town code designed to regulate the installation of a pool on a residential lot. Then going to the standards, and thank you for the TAM. Okay. Uh, asking the question, pursuant to two fifty-five dash eight dash fifty of the town code, uh, the ZBA must find when granting a variance, A, that the benefit of the applicant to grant the area variance outweighs any detriment which granted the variance will uh, cause gastric health, safety and welfare of the neighbor in the town. I don't think the benefit does outweigh that. I think that by establishing the location of this pool where it is, if it could begin a cycle of similar applications and possible approvals, that would not benefit the neighborhood. The area variance, under B, the area variance be granted the minimum variance necessary and adequate to alleviate the difficulty caused by the applicant requesting the area variance. I, I don't believe it's the minimum variance necessary. I think that that pool, had they wanted it in a different application, they might have removed the deck and say we're pulling the, pulling the pool back far enough. But that was not an option that they were willing to consider. That was one that there was, uh, the pool was essential, I mean, the deck was essential for living on this property, uh, living in that site because it's a very small house. And then under two fifty-five dash eight dash fifty as well, uh, whether or not the grant to the variance will cause an undesirable change of the character, neighborhood, I've already mentioned that I believe it will. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant will be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, I think that it could. Uh, and then under um, and then under C, whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is extremely substantial, a twelve foot variance on a, on a twenty foot setback. Whether the grant to the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. I would not say that it will, I would say that, that, that was not the, the factor that would sway me one way or another. Whether the difficulty causing the applicant to request an area variance was self-created, it absolutely was self-created, they're asking for a pool on an undersized lot. Uh, we have uh, applications come in front of us and we've ruled in many cases to provide relief the applicants when they're looking for this kind of appurtenance. Here's a situation, we have an undersized lot, people are asking for a swimming pool. There was mentioned by the, uh, by Lori Wilshire, the applicant's representative, that part of this is caused by the fact that there's this steep slope to the front of the property and so the house has been moved back on the property. Unless every property comes with its own conditions and that's a condition that in this case would not allow for a pool to be put in the area where they want to see it happening. This is not a hard call for me. I don't think this is a good application in terms of a proposal and I'm gonna deny it at this time.
Thank you. Member Berger?
Okay, I uh, I agree with my fellow board member. Sure, basically all the same reasons. The variance is large, very large, it's sixty percent variance. So, the requested area variance is substantial, yes, absolutely. Well, the grant of the variance will have an adverse effect on, on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, the affected area of town. Um, in, in a way, as far as the, well, the, the affected neighbors, uh, it, it is the first time that a pool would be approved in the entire Colloden area that, with a, a variance. So, the first, so the grant for the variance causes an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and detriment to nearby properties. It would be a, a very bad precedent setting thing and I am not gonna be the first one to approve one. We have the double setbacks, this thing is large. They made several different attempts at this project and this is the best they could do, but I think it's not necessarily a small pool. I really think they do have no other alternatives other than to give up something else that they didn't explore, you know, the hot tub or some other rearrangement of the, the pool and much smaller, but um, a pool certainly of that size, I don't think they could put anywhere else. And it is not the minimum variance necessary. And I think the difficulty causing the applicant to request the area was self-created, it absolutely was. And, and for those reasons, um, I am denying this application.
Member Mary?
Yes, thank you. So the, we know the Colloden area or the neighborhood of Montauk is one of most unique character defined by the history of the leisureama. We all know what that's about, but the other most defining character of this neighborhood is the preponderance of very small lots. Um, a review of the number of lots and lot sizes in the area shows that nearly every single lot in this neighborhood are severely pre-existing but undersized to the B residence zone minimum. This lot, it's seventy-five hundred square feet, is I think sixty-three percent below the minimum residence lot size. Um, and I think half of the lots in the neighborhood are this size, some are a little, little bit bigger at eleven thousand square feet. So what this means is that in this area, this is one of the most dense neighborhoods in town and as such, this makes things like lot line setbacks especially crucial to preserve the quality of life, character, orally growth and well-being for all who live in it. And as we know, the point of the double setback um, on a pool is to, in addition, reduce potential detriment to surrounding properties. This four hundred ninety square foot pool is not a small one. We, we just looked at a five acre property that has a five hundred square foot pole on it. It's not, and it's, it's a sixty percent rear yard setback, which numerically is a very substantial variance, but it's not just a small corner of this pool. The entire thirty-five foot length is all, um, all requires that and it's really like eighty-five percent of the whole volume area of the pool is not meeting um, the rear yard setback. The applicant, as has been said, dismissed the question about considering a smaller pool. You know, on very constrained and small lots, this board, you know, frequently has an applicant come in front of us with a plunge pool, you know, a hundred, two hundred square feet. Um, I think it's not for us to redesign an application, but I think we could all look at the survey and see a place where something a much smaller type, uh, you know, amenity like that could meet setbacks. So, and then lastly, as was said, the planning department noted, quote, "While some neighboring properties have swimming pools, those pools have been able to comply with the required setbacks. To date, there is no known history of a ZBA granted pool variances in the immediate area." And I too believe granting one would um, set precedent very quickly um, in a neighborhood like this. The app, the application fails, as I see it, to meet any of the standards for variances under two fifty-five, eight fifty. It's self-created, um, it's detrimental to uh, neighbors and the neighborhood. Um, it will change that, if that precedent is set, it will change the character of the neighborhood. The screening and the fence does, cannot mitigate uh, the detriment that could happen from having a pool so close to setbacks. Um, there were other alternatives that would have reduced or eliminated a variance. This is totally self-created. So all in the size of the lot and its array of current improvements mean this lot is just not sufficient or appropriate for the amenity of the scale that has been proposed under the application.
Member Thorson?
Thank you, Vice Chair Severisi. Um, in my opinion, the lot size and the location of the house simply cannot accommodate a pool without a significant variance and would establish an unwanted precedent for the neighborhood where there are many similar sized uh, and constrained lots. Even though the immediate northern and southern neighbors have written in support of the variance, the proposed location of the pool would meet the required setback, uh, side yard setbacks of twenty feet to their properties, thereby benefiting them of the required setback, while the rear neighborhood, uh, neighbor, excuse me, for whom we haven't heard, would have a pool with its attendance detriment sixty percent closer to their property line than intended by law and would deprive them in perpetuity of the intended benefit of the required setback. So, whether the grant of the variance will, as per two fifty-five dash eight dash fifty, whether the grant of the variance will cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or will create a detriment to the property, our decisions run with the property, with the land in perpetuity. That the affected lot to the rear is currently owned by an LLC and, and is unoccupied is irrelevant. I believe, I believe allowing a pool to be sixty percent closer to the rear property line than permitted will create a detriment to the rear neighbor and establish a negative precedent for the neighborhood. Uh, whether the uh, benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, the pool could conceivably be located under the rear deck if it were cantilevered or eliminated. Uh, whether the variance is substantial, yes, a sixty percent variance is very substantial. Whether the grant of the variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, I believe having a pool sixty percent closer to a property line than intended could adversely affect the rear neighborhood, neighbor with increased noise. I believe the variance uh, being requested is a self-created, uh, for a self-created purpose and for these reasons, I vote to deny the application.
Thank you. It was brought up during the public hearing that the property owner, uh, I'm sorry, that the property was very well screened, but that only affects the visual impacts. I appreciate the three letters in favor, but setbacks are there to protect adjoining property owners and these decisions we make are for perpetuity and ownership changes as we often see on this board. The extent of the existing developments on the property limits options for conforming location and the alternatives that were looked at don't really work out because of the constraints of the property. All the other pools in the neighborhood complied with the required setbacks and let's not forget, especially with a pool, the noise factor and the reasoning behind the setback requirements. The setbacks are also there to ensure there is enough space for emergency, emergency personnel in the event of an emergency. I think, um, where is mine? This is a substantial variance and I've said this before, some properties are just not conducive to have a pool. So the extent of the encroachment just does not meet the standards and I will be denying this application in its entirety as well. Okay, counsel? Okay, let's make this right. You should play music for me too then.
Music stops.
Music stops. This is John. Where is Roy's? Is this Roy?
It's Roy there, isn't it, under you?
Oh, here he is, okay. Just in case you forget who you are.
And next we have Water View Three LLC at two thirty-two Westlake Drive, Montauk. Subtaste map number three hundred dash twelve dash four to twenty-nine. The size and location is twenty-seven thousand fifty square feet at two thirty-two Westlake Drive, Montauk Beach Development Corp., subdivision number seven, Westlake Residential Section Block One Fifty-Five, Lot Six, map number ten twenty-four, Montauk. The description is to allow the removal of existing walkways, wall and ornamental vegetation relocated, propane tanks and to allow a new stone retaining wall, gravel driveway extension, new walkways and associated structures on a parcel of land containing tidal wetlands. Relief saw is a natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty-five four twenty of the East Hampton Town Code and two variances are required for this application. Variances of seventy-four feet and sixty-eight point five feet are required from two fifty-five four thirty of the town code to allow the existing walkways to remain twenty-six feet and existing block wall to remain thirty point five feet from tidal wetlands where unfair setbacks are required and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is a residence zone X flood zone. And the E eight secret class is type two. Counsel? Who's, who's was this?
It's mine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But remember that the hearing was on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We were working from a Jamie Walsh survey dated. The landscape plan we received from Gehrig and Crawford Landscape Architects was dated January 23rd, 2024. John Tarbet represented the applicant, Morgan Slater represented the planning department. This requires an NRSP and two variances, 74 and 68.5 feet, one for a gravel walkway, and the other full block wall has already been mentioned by the chair. There is no new work associated with this particular application. There is the relief asked to be granted for work for the removal. All the removal work, the removal of those walkways and wall has already been completed, and that is not part of this application at this point, except for the grant relief for the action taken. The variance is noticed to the wetlands to the north and the east of the parcel, which is basically on the neighbor's property, and it's not measured back down to the Lake Montauk and the shoreline. So the variances are measured from that wetland. We do have the NRSP to consider, obviously, for the entire parcel. Parcel has a past history, and we've had them, we've had other conversations about this parcel. None of those previous conversations enter into tonight's decision-making. As mitigation for the applicant for wanting this wall that they ran around the house, extended beyond, there was a conversation, there was a pre-existing stacked stone wall and there was a replacement of it. We didn't see that on a survey. There was a discussion about whether it did or didn't exist. At this point, though, what we were asked to do is to take a look at that northeast corner where the wall projected down to its nearest point and determine whether or not that we were willing to allow that, whether or not that was significant enough to deny this application. Additionally, there was a gravel walkway that runs along that wall between the residence and the wall. That was also noticed. It was mentioned by Morgan Slater that they didn't consider, the planning department did not consider, that gravel walkway to be a particularly injurious potential to the environment there because it is permeable, although it still comes in front of us. And then we're talking basically about the wall in that area. One of the things that came up was what could be offered as mitigation. There was a discussion that night by the board, back and forth, and the conversation went back to the representative, who then agreed that as mitigation, the applicant would be willing to revegetate a portion, or to vegetate a portion of the existing lawn that extends along the northeast property line, and offered a covenant, he also offered a covenant to protect against the use of pesticide and fertilizer on the lot. The chair pointed out that's unenforceable. There was suggested by the applicant that it was still something they could offer up, and it would pass down from one to another. The key to this is the re-vegue plan. We're being asked if we get revegetation to help protect what is now a formal lawn area from, that comes right up to the edge of their property line. We're bringing that back. What are we, what are we, what are we gaining for the town? What are we gaining for the environment? I think that the re-vegue plan, as discussed that night, did wind up offering, for me, enough mitigation to approve this application. I think that what we had, and was pointed out by several board members, was a fertilized lawn coming up to, you know, close juxtaposition to the wetland. By eliminating that, having that be revegetated, I will say that I'm not clear, and I think the board should all weigh in on to what extent that is to be. That night, I know they agreed that we would come down along the east and the north property line in an easterly direction. And I, that was drawn out here, it was discussed by Morgan Slater, I was happy with what she showed us that night, and I'm willing to do it, and I will define it a little more clearly at the end if we all weigh in on it. Obviously, the re-vegue plan would have to be approved as a condition of any approval given here, and as I say, a discussion may be necessary by us to determine exactly what we're all willing to approve. Terms of the standards under 255-850, whether the grant of the variance will cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, I'm saying no. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some feasible method, there is one that could have been done. This work might not have been done, but they still have presented it to us. Whether requested area variance is substantial, it is substantial, but whether or not it's going to have a significant impact on the environment, I could not, I don't, I don't believe it would. Whether the grant of the variance will have adverse effect or impact on the physical environment, I just said that, I don't think it does. And then whether the difficulty causing the applicant's request in area variance was self-created, yes, of course it was. The applicant must demonstrate then under 255-551, whether or not the preservation of natural resources, all structures in use of the coastal shall be located upland and not be located. No, this is located close enough that it would not, it would not get any relief in that one. Under alternative reason, we have a property determined not to exist. I don't think there's, I think alternative opportunities were there for the wall not to exist, but again, we have a wall. We're now determining whether or not the mitigation that we're being offered will compensate that. And then whether or not the design entailing a smaller building structure reduce, or are the setbacks diminished in reconfigured areas determined not to be effective. I think that, that, I think that what we have here is that, yes, I would say that we don't have to worry. We're not, I'm not looking for an additional change in that. And then the 255-5-40, the compatibility, is this the site of the proposed use suitable for one location? Is this compatible in this neighborhood and community in general? I think, yes, I don't think this is going to do anything to provide a detriment to the, to the neighborhood or to the roadway there. And whether the natural characteristics of the site are such, the proposed that we introduce here without undue disturbance, I think that Morgan Slater weighed in on the, on the walkway, and I think the small nature, it's about a 20 or 22-inch wall in that area that now is holding back what looks like might have been held back before. It certainly is a drop from one elevation to another, so that wall seems to have been a retaining wall in the past. For all those reasons, I am willing to approve this application at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with my fellow board member, actually add the bottom line of this. But the, what I have a problem with, I guess, is it was nice that we talked about revegetation and talking on the northeast side, however, I don't think it was enough that, unless we could clarify that. You know, we, this, this house had some of these types of features before, before this work was done, before there were issues with it. So anything on the landward side of the house, I'm okay with as far as an NRSP. It is the side, when you come through the gate and you have this stone walkway that requires the variance and the, and the wall, I could give the variance, and I will be giving the variance on, I do think they, they meet the standards if the revegetation were sufficient. We saw the photos there, and there was grass all around the pool, and everything seaw- laker of the, the gate that you come, you go into the back is all, is all grass and stone. I think that entire back portion should be revegetated with beech grasses and, as recommended by the, the planning department. And the pool is in disrepair. We saw that, and I guess if this is approved overall, I'm not sure what to do about the pool other than can we make a statement that this would have to come in front of us, certainly, for any work to be done on it.
It has to.
I don't know if we have to state it again. But, so, you know, I agree on the standards. I think they are huge variances. I think they won't really change the character of the overall neighborhood over here on Westlake Drive. But, well, they are huge variances, and they are self-created, but that whole area in the back, I would approve these variances. I think they, that if we get the, the revegetation and get rid of the grass, which would automatically eliminate the irrigation and pesticide issue, that, that I would approve this application, approve the NRSP on it.
Thank you. Jane?
Yes, thank you. So I actually struggle, been struggling, struggled on, through my deliberation on this. So we have the stone walls. Of course, these things were done without the benefit of a permit. We know the receipt to stop were recorded. So the walls on the next, you know, on the, towards the north side, wetlands on the property next door, these are very substantial variances, and, you know, it's not, I don't see the board doing, there are many times where we deny walls and structures that close to wetlands. And there was really no particular reason cited for needing these walls. It was sort of more aesthetic, creating flattened areas. So I'm not quite sure really what the benefit is to the applicant. So that's the first thing I'm struggling with. The second thing, and by the way, don't we need a variance on the stepping stone on the south side of the property, that stepping stone path? It's not, I don't think it's noticed, so that, I believe there's a third, that's a third variance, right? Don't we need that?
Well, yeah, the existing walkway is 26 feet, I think.
No, no, that's the, that's the little gravel path on the north.
The way we notice is just for walkways in general.
I'm sorry, one more time.
It's just the most, whatever the most variance is, the walkway is. We don't get like, not every foot of the walkway gets a variance.
I never quite understood it because it's a separate structure. Okay, never mind. So, but I guess, you know, I want to go back to something that was said by the planning department in the hearing, because, you know, the applicant was saying that there's not a nexus from what we are being asked to approve relative to, you know, many, all of us expressed concerns. The chairman, I think, was very eloquent about it. You know, we have a sloping, irrigated, fertilized sod lawn going right down to wetlands. And, you know, what was said was from planning, I don't get it word for word, but basically a quote, "With such an intense level of development as is on this property, any additional development should be offset by mitigation." This is an HPOD. Yes, it's pre-existing, allowed 100% clearing, but this 26,000 square feet of clearing where there should be, you know, if, to protect the lake, which is an impaired water body, you know, would, would be 10,000. So this is where I'm struggling because I don't think, I don't find necessarily that the mitigation that was discussed in that sort of corner there is sufficient. But I do want to work that through with the rest of the, the board. So leaning, I mean, I think if it can't be greater mitigation, I agree. I think that whole area that runs parallel to the wetlands, sorry, the, you know, the, the lake and that old concrete retaining wall, between that and the pool, I, I do see a nexus to that being revegetated. So that's where I am. So can I just leave it right there for now? Want to hear the rest of it? Okay, thank you.
We will have a discussion about that for sure. My chair.
Okay. Well, the retaining wall replaced a previously stacked stone wall. It was done without a building permit, needed a variance and an NRSP, and a majority of the wall in question is on the landward side of the house. The reasoning for the wall was to create a flat area for the parking, the transition from the parking area between the garage and the house due to the slopes in a safe way. The wall, in my opinion, actually creates a benefit from stopping that slope from runoff from the driveway area down to the wetlands between the wall and the vegetation around the wall. I do agree with the TAM that environmental conditions on this property could be improved by removing the sod lawn on the water side of the pool and revegetating with native beech grass, especially since this is an HPOD. As already been said, this really is an intense level of development existing on this property. So the mitigation in terms of removing that sod lawn is appropriate because sod is not even compatible with the HPOD standards. And since Montauk is a compromised water body, I think the mitigation recommended, if approved, will, will benefit the lot environmentally and protect the native characteristic, natural characteristics. In terms of the gravel driveway extension, it's permeable, and it does not really create any additional, would not be a increase, the runoff in any way. Now, are these variances substantial? Yes, I don't think any of us would disagree with that. But every existing structure on this property, not before us tonight, are all extremely non-conforming to setbacks. I mean, the residence is setback 37 feet. So I think as long as we implement a buffer and the revegetation that was recommended by the planning department, as long as we incorporate that, especially since it's in an HPOD, I am willing to approve this application. I don't see any detrimental environmental issues associated with it. As long as we implement conditions of approval regarding the revegetation, I'm willing to approve the application.
Thank you. I, I agree with my board members. This is, I, there was an, there was a discussion that, that evening, especially when we were talking about the buffer. Counsel John Tarbet was mentioning, you know, saying, okay, but there needs to be a nexus for us requiring it. And I think, I, that's what I struggled with. What is that neck, nexus? But I think our board members tonight defined that nexus. We, this is a heavily developed piece of property. If it had come before us, and if they had come before us with these improvements, there would be a buffer there.
Yeah.
We know that, that is the history, that is, that is the integrity of this board to do that. And I think this board did establish the proper nexus to seek a buffer along both, both sides of that pool. And I do feel that we have done that. I would, I too would suggest that we condition it on a buffer both on the east and the north and the property.
I think so. That's the best we can do, actually. Well, I, yeah.
I, I think they established the nexus adequately this evening. I really do feel that we've done this.
Would we be allowing a three-foot walk around the pool, or?
Yeah, you have to allow some.
Yeah, I think you have to, right?
Yeah, I think we probably.
Well, they have a deck around the pool.
Well, you want to be able to go around the deck, too.
There has to be maintenance, though. We should, there should only be four foot, probably enough.
If you have the stones or so walkway.
But we need, we need, we need buffers along our water, and that's, that's good environmentally. There, the buffers are good.
And are we, is it beech grass, or do we want something more woody and robust for the runoff?
I think, I think, I think that if the TAM mentioned beech grass, which they did, I think we should be consistent with that.
I'd be in complete harmony with what the planning department thought.
So define the.
Yeah, can we just point?
Area we're talking about, I mean.
I want everything that, when you go past that gate where the stone walkway continues and ends with grass around it.
I think we have to, I think, I think before we.
To the south.
I think we have to be careful of overreach, and I'm not, I'm not saying we are saying that, but I think we should take a look at that.
The variance is.
Yeah, the gate, from the gate.
Yeah, from the gate.
Right here.
The walkway that got the variances.
From that, that gate right here, right?
I think there can be no argument.
And then this and this.
To implementing this mitigation.
This is the pool right there.
Yeah. Okay, because another gate here.
Can we be pointing it up?
Yeah, let's look, because the audience can't see. Our fans out here can't.
I, what, what I would suggest doing is from the gate on the north side.
Yeah.
Going easterly and then along the east side of the pool, but carry that straight line across. And let them have some lawn there.
I would.
I think, I think that's reasonable because our, our, we're protecting the water, and I think that's giving us adequate buffer.
And the wetlands on the north.
Right.
I would, I would approve the variance and the NRSP based on that.
I would, yeah. I think that's fairly appropriate mitigation.
I can't see what you're doing.
It's basically the north.
If you want to come down here, Charlie.
And my concern with that is that it's still going to leave grass on the south side of the pool.
But we're doing a buffer all the way across, so.
Yeah, but nothing's going that way.
Yeah, but it's going all the way down.
I remember going, it's, yeah.
But then it's got to come this way a little more, too.
And then four feet of it, so four feet off of here, so between them, chain law, four foot, and then four foot.
All the way to the southern property.
I will attempt to...
That's still going to leave them with some grass.
That's okay.
That's the size.
I think it's an overreach to go further.
I think, I just think it is an overreach there.
The walkway we just gave a huge variance to is, ends there.
Like that? Yeah, but I think, but, off, like, not directly up onto the...
But here, we're protecting these wetlands. This, we're protecting those wetlands, the tidal wetlands.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Yes, generally that.
I think we have to be noted, Terry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, that, that's probably.
Right, that's it.
Yep.
Something like that.
Yep.
But up, just up to the retaining wall, or are they going to, well, they're not going to re-vegue on the other side of the retaining wall, because that's the beach.
Yeah, it's just approximation. I mean, the retaining wall ends here anyways.
No, no, the, the retaining wall is...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm fine with as it's drawn.
Vegetated probably on the other side of that anyways, yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
I, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so approved condition on that.
Is it, you know, Terry, are you...
Terry, are you with us?
I don't like it, but I like, yes.
But how do you feel though? Okay, you'll go with all of it?
Just bothers me that there will still be grass over on that side.
But just so the minutes are right, you're willing to... Yes, let's be clear.
Yes, I said.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have some resolutions. Paul Bronzo, no, we have minutes of October 7.
There was one error still in the minutes.
Yeah, there's one thing we're still working on.
What is, what are we working on? Because we had a discussion in pre-meeting today about this. And we, we, I, I don't want to get into a habit of just, if, if the minutes are succinct and factual, I, I think we should put them forth and say, yes. Do they have to include everything? I don't know. So I don't know what needs to be in there or not.
There's a factual error in it. This is factual.
That's what I'm saying. I just, the item that's, there were two things that were not factual. One got corrected. The other one was regarding the Eckert app. I gave Charlie my email, because it'll be the last time. Because when I re-watched our deliberations on that application, it ended up being that the full board approved that application with a 26 for variance.
I approved the application, and it didn't mean it to say that I sent it, that I was not in agreement, so.
Because I disagreed with the board.
I approved the application.
But I approved...
All right, well, let's just table it for now, and we'll figure this out in a minute. I don't know what to do with this, Charlie.
Yeah, we'll just post them. It doesn't matter. We'll, we'll fix it, and we'll just post them. It doesn't, you don't have to, we don't need to have this, have to be, just, we'll fix them, we'll send them out here. We'll fix them tomorrow.
I don't want it saying that I disagreed with it.
We'll fix them, we'll send them out, we'll post them, we're done.
Thank you, Charlie.
Fix them.
Resolutions, we have Paul Bronzo, modification at 65 Jaclyn Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map, 300-176-1-19.
Thank you. This was a modification on a, to rebuild in place and in kind to existing outdoor decks attached to the south side and the north side of the building, and we all agreed that that made sense. So in the matter of Paul Bronzo, modification, 65 Jaclyn Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map, 300-176-1-19, and make a motion to approve the modification as written. Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Thank you. Next, we have 53 T.I. Drive LLC, 53 Treasure Island Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk Map Number
I was not present for this one, so John, you can...
You can vote for that. Yeah, and I sent, I got a call about, there was a question on some of that. I, I did edit it again subsequent to the original one, so there's a, it was a little bit, a little confusing, because there was a denial of the side yard setback, but the board didn't have a problem with the LP tanks being there on the property. They just didn't like them where they were currently. But unfortunately, the way this property is set up, I don't know if there's a spot where they can go without requiring at least a variance from wetlands, because of just the way, or, you know, it's, so I will, take a look at it if you, I emailed it to you guys.
I saw that.
It's, so it's a denial of the variance, but I also put a condition saying that they could, you know, propose some, a better location of the LP tanks, because you have to have the LP, you can't just not have them.
Yeah, right, but...
You have to have them.
But we also denied the...
And the fence as well, yeah. The fence is denied.
That was missing.
Yeah, but once you move the tanks, the fence is going anyway, because that's all the reason the fence is there.
Right. Okay.
But I just wanted to make it, I didn't want it to, I wanted to give the applicant a way to still put, put them somewhere, and not just deny it, and then, and then not have, you know, heat or something, you know what I mean?
Went to a more conforming location.
Yeah, just a more conforming location.
Motion?
This is good.
So in the matter of 50, and everyone will remember, this was an application to legalize a whole number of things, because there, I don't think there's ever really been a skill on it. And we also made a condition, I think a 10-foot revegetated buffer along the rear lot line. So in, and we were pretty much unanimous on everything except the tanks, but it was, this was just discussed. So in the matter of 53 T.I. Drive LLC, 53 Treasure Island Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map, 300-175-5-36, I make a motion to approve the resolution as just discussed as amended, as written. Did I say that right?
Second.
Concur.
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 Thank you. My chair.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the zoning board of appeals meeting on 10/21/25 at 9:05 PM.
Second it?
Concur.